Two.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Landale City Council meeting. I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember, I think you're on, I believe you're on mute.
Double muted, I'm here.
Okay. Mayor Pullen Miles, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kearney.
Okay.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
I'm here.
All members present.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, let's have our public safety report, let's hear from Captain, um, Alan.
Uh.
Mr. Mayor, did you want the flag salute?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's back up, that's the flag salute, let's ask Councilmember Daniel Reed to lead us in flags.
Hey, thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, Detective. Now, we will hear from, uh, Captain Allen, have the public safety report.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for October nineteenth through November first. As we continue into the fall season, I want to remind our citizens to be diligent in their efforts to protect themselves and their fellow citizens in regards to COVID- nineteen, it's much appreciated. In regards to crime, the city's overall crime rate continues to ch- trend downward. We continue to see a decrease in burglaries, robberies, as well as grand theft autos, which are down from previous highs. In efforts to continue the reduction of theft and other related crimes, Lieutenant Leo and Sergeant Nitz led a parole compliance operation, which targeted fifteen post-release supervised persons, otherwise known as PSPs, who residing in Landale and the surrounding cities. These PSPs have agreed to be, um, contacted by probation and law enforcement officers in exchange for getting out of prison early. The PSPs were found to be adhering to their parole requirements and no arrests or significant seizures were made, however probation search were conducted. These type of operations will continue to feature to ensure PSPs in the city of Landale and surrounding areas will continue to adhere to their parole requirements and not break the law. In regards to interesting arrests, on October twentieth at eight P M, Deputy Hernandez responded to forty-five hundred block of one hundred sixty-sixth street for a call for service regarding an assault with a deadly weapon, where a neighbor had shot the victim with a pellet rifle. Deputy searched the suspect's location and recovered a pellet rifle, but did not locate the suspect. Uh, five days later, on October twenty-fifth, Deputy Stone Rap and Hernandez were on a traffic stop when Deputy Hernandez immediately recognized the suspect from the assault call. The suspect was arrested for an assault with a deadly weapon and booked at South West Angeles Station. This is a reminder that pellet and BB guns are considered dangerous weapons, and any use of them towards another person can result in arrest. On October twenty-seventh at five P M, um, Deputy Hernandez contacted by an employee at the Corner Joint Restaurant, who stated that he absorbed another male inside his unlocked vehicle. It appeared the suspect was attempting to steal his vehicle. At this point, the employee yelled to some bystanders who pulled the suspect out of his vehicle. However, the suspect was able to break free and ran away. While checking the surrounding area for the suspect, Deputy Hernandez was contacted by another person, who stated a man matching description of the suspect had entered his vehicle and stole some items. As Deputy Hernandez continued his search for the suspect, he absorbed a male matching description, um, given to him by the prior victims. A field shot was conducted and the victims positively identified the suspect. The suspect was arrested and booked at South Los Angeles Station for attempted grand theft vehicle and petty theft. This is a great example of Landale citizens looking after each other and coming to the aid of persons who are being burglarized, burglarized, excuse me, and is much appreciated. Last, on October twenty-second at twelve-ten P M, Deputies Hayes and Vasquez responded to the forty-three hundred block of one hundred sixty-fourth street for a call for service regarding a residential fire where a neighbor was inside of the house. After the fire was extinguished by the fire department, deputies made contact with the suspect at the location, who was the son of the owner. Uh, um, after questioning him, it was determined that he had intentionally set the fire. The suspect was arrested for arson and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Though this was a family situation, the deliberate setting of the fire could have had disaster results had the fire grown. Much thanks goes to the deputies in the fire department for helping contain this situation so quickly. Uh, this concludes our report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Captain Allen, is there any, um, um, comments on the captain's, um, report? Okay, well, thank you, Captain Allen, for your important, thank you, deputies for all their hard work.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, let's, uh, move on to oral communication, um, let's check with the Assistant City Clerk to see if we receive any oral communications.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, thank you, yes, we have one, and I'll go ahead and read or repeat them. Uh, Pam London, Landale resident. My understanding is that the Best Western is no longer operating under Project Room Key. When did this end and why haven't Landale residents been updated? What became of the Best Western residents? Were they removed from Landale? Were, were they turned out on our streets? What happened? Landale residents are past due an explanation. Last week, several of my neighbors became concerned when an unknown man was seen on my property. At one point, he was seen laying in my driveway and later looking into my vehicle. He was viewed in my rear parking next to my window. I called the Sheriff's Department not once but twice complaining about the individual. Both times, I felt my concerns were chalked up to a nuisance call. I was informed the officers were not on a call and would respond soon. While talking to a neighbor on the sidewalk as Sheriff's SAV was coming up the street, he waved as he was passing by. I ailed at him and they stopped. They did not have a record of my call. They located and approached the man, but were unable to remove him from the area. Considering deputies not, did not know of my calls, it lends to the idea that my calls were not consi- were considered a nuisance and not important. All residents should be concerned, this could happen to you too. No matter how that lady answering the phone at the Sheriff's Department deemed my call, this is not the way public safety concerns should be dealt with. While he was not a physical threat at the time of my calls, who knew if he would become one? Are our sheriffs on tactical alert this week in the event of an uprising? And that ends public comment.
Alright, thank you, sir, for the public comment, um, let's hear if there's any comments from the, um, the council. Let's start with Councilman Osborne.
No.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you for speaking, no for the comment.
Okay, Councilman Pat Kearney?
I just have two, uh, maybe the cap can find out why the response time was, uh, nil and void, they never showed up. And, uh, this one's for Kevin. Why wasn't the, uh, the residential Landale knowing about the Best Western being closed up as a Project Room Key to our residents on our website?
Sure, um, Councilmember Kearney, I'll, I'll start first and then the captain can respond after. Uh, regarding, um, the Best Western Hotel and, um, ending their operations, um, they did end their operations as of, uh, last month on October tenth, and all of the, um, uh, residents of the hotel, the homeless residents, um, were relocated to other, either other Project Room Key locations, uh, elsewhere throughout the county, or they were found, um, other housing, um, options. Um, that information has been on our website for at least a month now, uh, or more, since we've, um, learned about, uh, the Best Western's closing date. Um, that, that has been on our, our, uh, website, and it is updated on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Including, um, last Thursday.
Alright. So Ms. Levick could look on the website, she could have spelled that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, Captain Allen, maybe you'll find out about the phone calls?
Yeah, without any specific information, um, I wouldn't be able to know, you know, I need, I would need that time, place, and location, but, um, I'll just remind everybody that, um, if they have an issue or concern with the response, um, they should call the station, ask for Watch Commander, and they would be able to at least get some immediate, uh, information, that's the, that's the best way to handle things.
Okay.
Then, then waiting, you know, you get an instant, um, explanation of what's going on exactly.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Robert.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, let's hear from, um, Pro Tem Suarez.
I have nothing to add, pass it along.
Okay. And I have nothing to add either, it's been, uh, been addressed. So we will close the public comment, and I'm with the council, and let's move to item F, which is consent calendar. Um, what is the body concerning the consent calendar? Three items.
Uh, Mayor, I have one question on item number two. Of course, I'm always on the item two. Uh, on the warrants, on the very first page at the top, it has Alshire Winder Legal Services for seventy thousand dollars. And then we have K O A Corporation for Engineering and Drafting Services for almost fifty-five thousand dollars. Why is our attorney fee so high? We're not, are we litigating cases, or are we, what are we doing? And then there's the K O A, is that the final payment for Cohono? So maybe Marla or somebody can take it?
The K O A, this is Marla, uh, Finance. On the K O A one, there, I believe there is still one more after this, uh, before the payments are for our previous interim.
Okay.
And then, did you want me to say anything about, um, the attorney ones, or would you like Tiffany to speak up on that?
Well, you know, in the last three, uh, city council meetings, we spent, it looks like a hundred ninety thousand dollars. What is our budget for the attorney, for attorney fees?
The budget is, um, I believe, three fifty for the whole year, and they're coming in right now, the quarterly claims are between sixty and seventy.
Okay, so, I'm estimating right now, we're about a hundred ninety, end of the year already. Okay, that's all I'm gonna do.
If, if I could briefly add to that, Pat, this is Tiffany.
Okay.
The, um, we did file the writ against Metro last month, and there are several receiverships that are in heavy litigation right now as well.
Okay. So that's the jump of ten thousand dollars? What'd you say?
Uh, the, the writ was probably more than ten thousand dollars, um, for last month.
Okay.
To prepare it.
Alright, that's it, Robert.
Okay. Very good, is there any other question concerning the consent calendar? Okay, here now, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, this is Pat, I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney and seconded by Suarez, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing now, um, Assistant City Clerk, um, please conduct the vote.
Thank you for the consent calendar, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you, sir. Item four, under administration, um, concerning our residential and commercial solid waste, um, rate, let's have that report.
Hi, I think that's mine, that's for the trash rate increase.
Correct.
Um, under administration.
Yes.
Hi, um, this is Leah, I'm the interim Public Works Director. Um, so the twenty-twenty-one residential and commercial solid waste collection rates. Republic Services is a solid waste collection and recycling services for Landale. They entered into their agreement in August of two thousand nineteen, and each year, according to their seven, um, year franchise agreement, they are, they may request one rate adjustment annually, so this year, they requested their rate increase, and the city's, um, solid waste management consultant, H F and H Consultants, they reviewed it, and, um, they felt that the cost formula adjustment was per the franchise agreement, and according to Proposition two eighteen, the Right to Vote on Taxes Act of nineteen eighty, ninety-six, any rate increase, um, which does not go over five percent can be automatically, um, increased without a notification, so this year, since the rate increase is two-point-six-four percent, it will go to, into effect on January first, twenty-twenty-one. So it is the staff's recommendation that the city council receive and file this report. And I'm sure you might have questions about it, so I'm here, and Grace is also here, if you have any questions about this.
Okay, excellent, thank you for that report, um, are there any questions of the, the staff report on item four?
Not a question, but there's gonna be, uh, concern about, uh, Leah, and you and Grace are gonna get a lot of phone calls about the increase, 'cause if you, uh, Grace remembers the last time I went, we did contract, when it doubled, we were inundated with phone calls, council got them, city staff got them, you guys got them. So it's only like a dollar something raised, but just everyone here for residents. So be prepared.
Right. Okay, we'll be prepared, we'll have everything noted on the website, on cable TV and social media for their information, and then they're welcome to call us at any time.
Yeah. The two-point-six-four percent.
Yeah.
Say, so what is the pleasure of this body considering item, um, four?
Do you need a, a motion to receive and file?
Yeah, we're receiving file, let's have one. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay.
Item four.
No, I'll second it.
And seconded by Kearney, so the motion's been made by Pullen Miles, seconded by Kearney, that we receive and file, um, the report, um, that made it to, um, item four. Is there, um, any discussion on the motion? Seeing now, I'm gonna ask the council to vote, I'm gonna ask the city, Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
Thank you for item four, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yeah.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you, sir. Next, item, item five, concerning the cancellation of the Angel Tree lighting in the state. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, this is, uh, Mike Estes, Director of Community Services. Uh, we've been to you folks, uh, a number of times for special event cancellations over the past seven-plus months, and we're here with the final cancellations for two thousand twenty, because, uh, these are the final two events left in two thousand twenty. Uh, the public, public health, uh, orders from Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and the State Health Department have not changed. Um, uh, they're still putting a strong emphasis on public events and public gatherings, which both of these events are. Uh, at this point, uh, Angel Tree, for Angel Tree, there's been no dollars spent on the event, there's been no financial commitments made. Uh, regarding the Santa Slay, uh, program, we have spoken to the leadership of, uh, Santa Slay regarding this cancellation several weeks ago, to make sure that this is the direction the club wanted to go. And, uh, just for the information, uh, for those that don't know, Santa, South Bay Twenty-Five Club, uh, funds, organizes, plans, and facilitates the Santa Slay program, which typically happens, uh, starts the Monday following the Angel Tree event, and, uh, in the discussions with, uh, the leadership of the South Bay Twenty-Five Club, it was, uh, mentioned that, uh, the club is considering doing a virtual holiday message from Santa Claus himself. In terms of Angel Tree, staff is also discussing some type, type of virtual holiday message to the community as well. Uh, whether that be a virtual countdown, or whether that be just giving the, uh, the community an opportunity to drive through and use the tree as a photo shot, uh, 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 photo op opportunities, or a conversation piece, uh, those are the two discussions happening right now about those events. Um, the recommendation from staff is as follows. Uh, staff recommends to the city council, A, cancel the two thousand twenty Angel Tree lighting event and Santa Slay program, and B, provide direction to staff regarding a potential Angel Tree lighting program alternative. And that concludes my staff report for the special event cancellations, I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you for that report, um, are there any questions of the, the staff report? Or any comment?
I have a comment, this is Pat.
Go ahead, um.
Is it feasible to have the city council at City Hall to do the countdown for the lighting of the tree? And have Tom, whoever, videotape it?
Uh, I guess I can take that, that is, uh, one of the discussions, uh, another discussion that has taken place is also doing something similar to what we did in Memorial Day, of po- potentially using, uh, past footage and splicing in interviews from various staff, council members, and whatnot, so those are the two, uh, those, that's one of the, uh, the, uh, opportunities that, uh, I know that's up for discussion, and then also, city manager and I several weeks ago discussed possibly just, uh, letting the community know that the tree is available for photo ops, and, uh, having kind of a offer, offering the community to drive through and see the beautiful tree being, uh, over the holiday season.
And, uh, this is Kevin Chen, um, just to follow up on what, um, Mike mentioned, um, and put another way, uh, we could certainly do, um, a virtual event for, uh, Angel Tree. It's something that's been discussed, um, Tom is, um, has been doing some preliminary work on that already, and, um, it's, uh, something where we could, um, have council members, um, do a, a video interview, and then, uh, collectively, we can, you know, come up with some way to, uh, make it so that, uh, the council is, uh, you know, pressing the button, so to speak, to, to light the Angel Tree. So, you know, we could do that any number of ways, uh, but yes, it can be done.
Well, I'd like to see it done in person, 'cause there's gonna be one, maybe possibly two, new elected city council members, and I think we should do it, Robert, Bernadette. Uh, Jim, is your last meeting, or you have one more to go? Anyway, uh, we should all be there in person and light the tree. And we can, I think we can safely distance us six feet apart from each other to light the tree and do the countdown.
Well, I like this, Dan, I like that idea.
Because of everything that's going on, Halloween, Haunt, I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I think Robert and I walked the city, and it was depressing to see no kids out, no Angel Tree. And I think we have to bring a little ray of hope to the residents of Landale, and do a live countdown with the council and city clerk.
Sounds good to me. They work at the D C L.
This is Kevin Chen again, sure, we can, um, certainly work on that as, as the idea, if that's what the council wants to do. Um, I will, um, talk with Tom, and we'll figure out how we can get that done, and then we'll be in contact with all of you about, um, about the specifics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay, with that, thank you for the report, with that, we're on item six, um, Proposition sixty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Estes from Community Services, I will handle this one as well, and we are discussing Proposition sixty-eight per capita grant resolution, uh, which is attached to the staff report. Uh, back in June, we were notified by the state of California that we, uh, were awarded a state, uh, per capita, uh, grant in the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, the grant is available on a reimbursement basis, uh, just a couple things that go along with the grant. Uh, the state requires a twenty-five percent city match, which equates to forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That brings us to a total grant award of two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we've considered several different, uh, options for the match, and we have a fair amount of, uh, Los Angeles County Parks Recreation Open Space District Measure A funding. Uh, in fact, we have four hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars in Measure A annual allocations funding, which is refreshed by about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars each year. Uh, so what we're, we're gonna do is we're, we have, I've already, uh, confirmed with the county and the state that this qualifies as a match amount, because once they come to the city, they're considered local funds, and the match amount must come from local funds, so uh, we will apply for, uh, Measure A annual allocations for forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars to cover the city match. Um, after we do that, and we've, uh, transferred the city match over to the city coffers, uh, our Measure A grant, uh, funding balance will be four hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And of course, those, that, that, those monies will be used on future grant projects, we have a lot of projects in mind, so we'll be coming to you folks fairly regularly over the next, uh, few years, I would think, to make sure that we spend all these monies, and these monies are available for parks and recreation, uh, facility improvements. Uh, the, the, the project that staff is, uh, suggesting at this point, although it's not a big part of the, uh, staff report, is a, uh, recreation facility security camera project, which we would, uh, upgrade or add new cameras to the following facilities, Hopper Park, Hogan Park, Rudolph Park, McKenzie Gardens, which is the only facility right now that is void of any security cameras, and also the community center. Just in brief, we have parks that were developed at different times. Some of them have old S D cameras, which, you know, S D cameras went out way back in the nineties. Uh, they don't give us very much clarity, they're very hard to pick out or to decipher images even close up, and some of the parks, they don't have enough, uh, they don't have enough security cameras. So what we wanna do is we wanna cover most areas of the park, the critical areas of the park, we wanna upgrade to the latest, uh, video cameras, which is two K, and they're moving towards four K right now, which is clear as the bell, very, very clear, and you can decipher, uh, images or individuals from a, a fair distance away, much better than what we have right now. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed, uh, Resolution C C dash twenty-eleven sixty-one, has approved it as a form, and the resolution simply, I'm sure you folks have already read it, but, read it, but the resolution simply confirms all of the city's grant responsibilities, such as funding the project until reimbursement can be, uh, uh, reimbursement can be, uh, realized, and then there's, uh, about, uh, about a dozen, um, a dozen conditions in the resolution that the city is gonna have to live by, and staff will make sure that we live by all of those, uh, conditions in the resolution. Uh, at this time, staff would like to recommend that the city council approve Resolution number C C dash twenty-eleven dash zero-six-one, approving the state grant conditions and authorize staff to file an application titled Recreation Facility Security Camera Project with the state of California, to use the Proposition sixty-eight grant funding that it was awarded back in June, in addition to the city's, uh, match amount. That concludes my report, and I'll be available for, uh, any questions that the council has.
Alright, thank you, sir, thank you for that report, are there any, um, questions for, uh, the, the report?
Uh, Mayor, this is Pat, I have one, of course, I have one, I have one. Okay, yeah, uh, Michael, at McKenzie Gardens, do we really, is it really necessary for have a camera there? People can hide behind the cornstalks and vegetables and cactus, how are you gonna identify anybody?
Well, you know, you can, you can place cameras in certain strategic positions to catch certain angles, uh, is it totally necessary? I mean, we've been without it for so long, uh, but you know, i- i- it is, uh, it is a risk, I think, having, uh, such a property without video cameras. Uh, I, I do believe it's necessary if we wanna, you know, upgrade our risk management program, and, you know, it is a facility where we can have injuries, we can have strange things that happen, and it would be nice to have, uh, video footage of that if it does, uh,
Okay.
if something like that does happen.
Okay. Okay, Robert.
Okay, okay, so you? Um, yeah, yeah, that was gonna be my only concern with McKenzie Garden as well, but it pretty much, um, justified the, uh, the installation of cameras. Anyone else have any, um, questions about ideas on item six? Okay, with that, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan, uh, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to approve Resolution C C two zero-one-one dash zero-six-one.
Yes, um, motion's been made by Pat that we approve, um, um, staff's recommendation to adopt considered resolution, and it was, um, seconded by Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Is there any, um, discussion on the motion? But, um, but to the attorney, you don't need to read the resolution. Okay, I don't think she needs to read.
Correct, Mayor, Mayor, I don't have to read anything.
Alright, thank, thank you, ma'am, I'm gonna ask the, the, uh, Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote on item six.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, for item six, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is uh the city manager's report, here from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor and members of the city council, I just have a couple of items to uh share with you tonight. Uh first, uh with tomorrow being election day, I just wanted to encourage um those in our community of voting age to uh go out and vote. Of course, elections are our cornerstone of our democracy and it's important for all of us to participate and vote. Um and for those that haven't already voted, um everyone should have received a vote by mail ballot by now. And there are a number of ways uh for uh all of us to cast our votes. Um first is by mail. As long as um we uh mail our ballots by tomorrow, to make them, and we make sure that it's postmarked tomorrow, um it will be counted. Um ballots can also be dropped off at a vote by mail drop box. Um and in Lawndale, that's, we have one that's located at Hogan Park. And um um you can also vote in person at a vote center. And in Lawndale, our vote center is at the Jane Adams Middle School. So for more information regarding the election tomorrow, um I invite people, I invite our residents to go to uh the city's website at lawndalecity.org. And also tomorrow, election results will be uh posted on our website. So anybody interested in um any of the um election results can go there to our website. And then also, um while the city has had to cancel um all of its community events this year, as we've done again tonight because of COVID nineteen. Um I'm glad to announce that um uh we will be uh able to put on our uh Field of Honor. Display of our American flags um on Veterans Day. So uh next week, uh we will be able to put on this event um safely. Um due to the fact that this isn't an event that requires a large gathering. And uh we invite our um our community to uh walk by, um walk by the um uh Field of Honor display. Or to drive by um and um pay their respects to those members of our community that have served in our um. In in one of our military branches. So we're we're very happy to say that that will be happening next week. And with that, that's all I have, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All righty, thank you for that report. Okay.
All right, Kevin, this is Dan, I do have a comment and a question for you, so appreciate the update on the Field of Honor. Uh is it gonna be posted on the website for residents who want to sponsor a flag as usual this year to be able to do so?
Yes, um if it's not on the website today, um already, I believe it is. Um uh but it will definitely, yes, it will definitely be on the website. And I can check really quick right now, let me, let me do that while we're all on.
And the flags will be at a reduced rate, correct?
Correct, um this year, we will be um for those that would like to purchase a flag in honor of somebody that has served, uh it will be fifteen dollars. And uh to answer the question, yes, uh we do have information on our website already.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that, really was to uh bring the awareness up to the top, so folks that are listening and watching are aware.
Right, and and much like the councils mentioned, um uh because it's been somewhat of a, you know, a down year for for all of us. Um we're really, really happy that uh this is one special event that we will be able to uh put on for um our community.
Very good. All right, with that, let's um move to item seven, um council report to council members and the mayor's report. Start with Councilman Osborne.
Thank you, Robert, I have nothing to report, I'll just echo Kevin's remarks on voting, although I voted last week. So I think a lot of people probably already voted too, anyway, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, talking about six thousand people have already voted. Um let's move to Councilman Reed.
Yes, sir, record turnout for uh early mail by vote, that's good, so, and I echo the same, you know, get out and vote if you haven't already. Um and then I have no meetings to report, thank you. Uh do want everyone a happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kearney?
Uh just a few things, uh I believe Kevin and I attended the Library Trust and Oversight Committee meeting this past month. Uh I attended the South Bay Web twenty fifth anniversary awards ceremony via Zoom, it was pretty nice. Uh I attended Dan and Reed and Herb Wesson's uh COVID nineteen testing and food giveaway. And also I have, I have to ask Jim, Jim, is this your last meeting as a councilman?
No.
Okay, good, and I wanna uh bring back to Kevin, you know, we've been on the back burner while our attorney firms representing this city. Are we gonna have something soon before the first of the year? Because I'd like to see, you know, interview the three that we, prospective uh attorney firms. And either keep the one we have or do a do one by the first of the year, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, what do we left, oh, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez, yes, ma'am.
Uh thank you, yes, I too attended um Councilmember Reed and um candidate for supervisor or Wesson's food giveaway. Um so I appreciate them coordinating and putting that together, I could tell there were people that were appreciative of that. And um thank you, Pat, for bringing up the um the interviews that we had put on hold. I too was wondering um a few, couple of months back, what was the status on that? And so just to keep that on the back burner and not to forget about it, with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, madam, um I attended the um the California um Joint Powers Authorities Annual uh Meeting of via Zoom. Um we had a different, um usually we don't have it um during this um this time of the year. Usually, I believe that's during the summertime, I believe, um but anyway, um it was a pretty long meeting. But nonetheless, very important presentations on reducing um our um liability. Um in terms of um our risk management and uh and insurance some issues. We also um installed our reinstars, say, uh my officers um for the upcoming um upcoming um year as well. So that was a good meeting. And I also attended the regular meeting of the sanitation um district meeting where we talked about all the things concerning um um waste. And um that was just regular meeting there. And that's all I have. With that, we will move to conduct two closed sessions. Um. Glad the city attorney to give us another closed session.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, the city council will meet in closed session on two items, as agendized as items J eight and nine. The first is to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. And the second is a public employee performance evaluation, thank you.
Excellent, with that, we've been reset to closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session, I wanna ask the city attorney to give the report of both closed sessions that we just did.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, the city council met in closed session on two items, first, to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Pursuant to government code sections five four nine five six point nine D two and D three. And then second, a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B. On both items, the council was updated, no reportable action, thank you.
Thank you, madam, city attorney, we have exhausted our agenda for today. For Germany time, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six thirty P M on Monday, November sixteenth. That will be well after my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thought I would throw that in there.
Were you fifty?
Thought I would throw that in there, anyway. November sixteenth, um at six thirty P M, and we are here adjourned, goodbye. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.